Thank you, thank you for that. The one thing that came up in a number of comments from the neighborhood in our correspondence was the size of the dock. So, and it's quite a bit larger than traditionally allowed. Are these concerns being raised because a dock's large, because we're talking about 21 households? Is the traditional legislation or policy in place for what I would describe as a single-family use dock? And therefore, it would have to be larger even if there were two residences being built, for example?
Mr. Mayor, in the city of Arilia, we did not regulate docks until 2014. So, people were able to build whatever size of dock, the number of docks that they could, while getting their approvals from M&amp;R and Transport Canada. And so, Mr. Morgan has provided an image on your screen, which he shows a number of large condominium docks in the area. And they're in the range of 70 to 80 meters in length. And so, again, these are approvals that were all received before we began regulating docks. So, our first foray into regulating docks, we essentially did create regulations for a single-family waterfront lot to have a single dock on the property, 3 meters by 15 meters. We did not build regulations in for condominiums that want to offer multiple slips for their residents. So, that's a reason for the request.
And presumably, had we contemplated this type of development, we also would have, I'd assume, put a proviso in, or provision for a larger dock than we did for a single-family. All right. Thank you. I'm very sorry, I will come back to you, Councilman, but Mr. Morgan, you want to come back in?
Just on the dock issue, I'll be very brief. I know that we're pushing time here. So, this image on your screen illustrates three docks within a five-minute paddleboard ride of the subject property. And you can see in the middle here, the sort of pink-purply rectangle, that was, to the best of my ability, an accurate representation of the size of the proposed dock. Okay? So, what I'm illustrating here is that Sophie's Landing Phase 1, which is the dock furthest to the left on your screen, or furthest west, the length of that dock is 70 meters and its width is 22 meters. Our proposal is for a 27-meter-wide length-long dock, 27 meters by 18 meters. So, Sophie's Landing is two and a half times longer. Sophie's Landing Phase 1 is two and a half times longer and wider. Invermere Bay Condominiums, which is the dock at the bottom of the same bay as the subject property, 73 meters long. We're proposing 27 meters. The width of Invermere Bay Condominiums is 17.6 meters, which is just shy of what we're proposing. Orchard Point docks is approximately 84 meters wide. We're proposing 27. Sorry, 84 meters in length, we're proposing 27. And the width of the Orchard Point condos docks are 36 meters, which is twice as wide as the ones that we're proposing. And I think I'll leave it at that. I'm really just trying to illustrate that what we're proposing here is entirely typical of what you would see for a multi-unit residential development.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Okay, Councilman on this?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I just want to comment on the traffic issue because, you know, in the five years that I've sat at this table, that has been a constant irritant, that the Ministry of Transportation has a set of technical requirements. And unfortunately, none of the studies to date have come close to meeting the technical requirements. And since they rule on that, my sense is that those staff have worked diligently and continue to lobby our professionals at the Ministry of Transportation. And I was speaking with Mr. Sugden the other day, and we meet twice a year with the ministry to try to resolve issues between the city and the province related to transportation. And this one is always on the agenda. So far, we've not been successful. My gut says that we might be more successful if the folks who are impacted by this were to take the time and the energy to write their provincial members of parliament, not only complaining about it, but providing anecdotes of the concerns they have and the near-misses that they have been involved in, so that you bring alive in your stories to our members of parliament the reality that you face on a day-to-day basis. I do know that that will, in fact, have some influence in terms of helping the ministry adjudicate requests from the city on a go-forward basis. Thank you, Mayor Clark.
Thank you very much, Mr. Morgan.
Sorry. One more thing, which I think is important to add. The fact is that this property could be developed as an apartment building without any council approval required. Nothing more than site plan approval would be required to develop an apartment building on the site, which could quite likely, or would almost certainly, have a higher density than the proposed 21 units. So, there's no holding provision on this property. So, I truly believe that what's being proposed here, it's a medium-density development, 21 units. We need council approval for a plan of subdivision, and we need council approval for the site-specific provisions in the zoning bylaw. However, a developer could come forward with a plan that required absolutely no public input or no council approval here, which would be of a higher density here and arguably a greater impact on the intersection. So, I just, you know, it's important to say that, I believe it's important to say that, because the developer has a property that's in an intensification area and where we have to come before you to seek a permission. There is an alternative, which is not the form of development that my client is looking for. It's not what he builds or wants to build, and I don't believe it's what the public wants to see there either. So, we would like to be your partner in communications with the MTO, but we absolutely do not want potential approvals of these applications to be delayed as we await some unknown date when the MTO may respond.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Much appreciated. I will say that does lead me to a couple of points. Like Councilman, this issue about the traffic lights have been brought to my attention since very early on in my first term on council. And I visit Orchard Point with some frequency, and I can tell you that I have myself experienced what it means to turn left into traffic on Highway 12. And I have also experienced near-misses. I think I only say this because I think I fully understand. Well, not only that, also, turning right off of Highway 12 into Orchard Point, it can be problematic because you've got to stop. I mean, the traffic, you come off of Highway 12 and the traffic's 80 kilometers an hour. Some people slow down to the proper 56, 60 kilometers an hour at that point, some don't. And if you're hitting the brakes without an exit lane and turning right off the highway, you need to be cognizant of what's going on in your rearview mirror when you do that. So, it is an interesting scenario. I think it's, I'm astonished at the disconnect between the city has been lobbying the provincial government for, the Ministry of Transportation material, and saying, yeah, it may not meet your warrants, but it certainly is a priority for the city. And in fact, the city passed budget for it a year or so ago to do a traffic study, to try to support our argument, to take it to the MTO. So, personally, from the chair, I like the provision that they put in there on the peer review, because a peer review is not an unknown date. To your point, Mr. Morgan, it'll be something that, information that will be turned around in a very, very imminently and inform this report as it comes back to council. The other thing that absolutely surprises me, and I know there are people on Orchard Point who have had property for decades and planned on building their retirement home there, and now they can't. With a strike of a pen, or a wave of a pen, it was, you know, the province deemed that area as an area of intensification a number of years ago, and of course, the city needs to, has to follow that. Now, we're doing another official plan review, which may, which may, and I say "may," lead to council recommending to the province that we, what's the phrase I'm looking for? Ms. Lewis, not de-intensify, but...
Down-designate to stable neighborhood?
Sorry?
Down-designate to stable neighborhood?
Yeah, down-designate to stable neighborhood, which would limit the development in the future. But as you said, Mr. Morgan, we're already faced with this area, which already has site-plan approval for some development. I think there's one next door to it, and then there's the apartment, sorry, then there's the apartment building, that could be an apartment building across the street. And all those things combined with the present development, they're, nothing but exacerbate the traffic issues at that intersection. And that's mostly what I have to say, and I hope we've addressed most of the comments we hear from the public. The pathway along Highway 12 is quite interesting, because it's actually not a pathway, and it's certainly not a sidewalk, although unknownst, unknownst to me until we got a hold of the MTO to find out why it was inadequately sized. Apparently, it's just a dumping station for snow when they plow Highway 11. So, people use it as a sidewalk or as a psychopath, but it's actually neither. Any other, oh, sorry, Councilor Fallas, you wanted to back in?
Thanks. Just a quick comment, I was kind of building on some of my questioning before, but I just, kind of an informal comment, if it's possible to pass along to the developer, if there's any opportunity to preserve some need of foliage or woodlot, just encourage them to please do so. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Fallas. Councilor, you've been conspicuously quiet. Councilor Campbell, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I'll make this quick. I know we're over time. Appreciate everyone's patience. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Mr. Morgan. The covered deck, so my understanding is that there is an existing building there that would be torn down, which leaves a cement pad, which is approximately 1,800 square feet. Am I correct here?
Through Mayor Clark to Councilor Campbell. So, the intention is to remove the, sorry, the intention is to remove the, I guess it's a boat house. It's a house. People have lived in that building for a long time. So, the intention is to remove that structure and then put a, basically, a deck over the structure with like a roof. So, it would be like an open-air, an open-air deck.
Okay, if I can follow up. 1,800 square feet, so it says up to 170 square meters, which is roughly 1,800 square feet, if my math is correct. And I'm up there, so 1,800 square feet makes more sense to me than 170 square meters. That's a massive deck, is it not, for a development that's 21 units? That just seems really excessive. And what concerns me most is that it's actually in the water. I just wonder if there's any opportunity to make that deck smaller. I realize it would involve removing part of that concrete pad, or whatever that structure is that it would be built on. It would also bring it back a bit from the water and maybe make it a little more reasonable size. I wonder if that was considered at all.
Who would like to tackle that one? Ms. Lewis, I'm going to start with you.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The shoreline protection plan that was written for this development spoke about this particular deck. And they felt that by placing the amenity space in an existing area that has been disturbed was the best for the shoreline. And so, there was a lot of rationale contained in their shoreline protection report for keeping the foundation in situ and minimizing the disturbance to the shoreline. So, that really was where the rationale had come from, was trying to actually implement the Lake Simcoe Protection Plan and support the shoreline.
That's almost the Councilor Spola's point earlier, I suppose. It's a form of shoreline protection.
So, basically, it's been there for a long time, so let's not disturb it and let's, okay, I understand. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, thank you all, members of council. I would like to go back to Mr. Sugden and bother him as our Director of Services and Development Services and Engineering to explain the process from here.
In accordance with City Policy 8.3, 8.1, 8.3, council will not make a decision on the proposed draft plan of subdivision, draft plan of common elements condominium, and zoning bylaw amendment until the consideration period of at least 14 days from tonight's public meeting has lapsed. However, if council wishes to defer this planning matter as set out in Option 3 and 4 of the planning report, it's recommended that a resolution be passed by council now to provide staff with direction with respect to the reason for the deferral.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. As a result of the proceedings, are there any recommendations you wish to bring to the attention of this particular chamber?
Staff recommends Option 1 in Report DSC 2001, and that is that the draft plan of subdivision 43T 19002, Sophie's Landing Development Corp., 3941 Orchard Point Road, including the proposed conditions of draft approval for final approval as generally set out in the draft form as Schedule C to Report DSC 2001, be presented to council at the next available meeting, subject to completion of the city's peer review of the traffic impact study, that the draft plan of common elements condominium 43CD 19002, Sophie's Landing Development Corp. at 3941 Orchard Point Road, including the proposed conditions of draft approval for final approval as generally set out in draft form as Schedule D to Report DSC 2001, be presented to council for its consideration at the next available meeting, subject to completion of the city's peer review of the traffic impact study, and that the application of the zoning bylaw amendment D14 886, Sophie's Landing Development Corp. 3941 Orchard Point Road, as set out in Schedule E to Report DSC 2001, be presented to council for its consideration at the next available meeting, subject to completion of the city's peer review of the traffic impact study.
Thank you very much, Ms. Lewis. Is there anybody from around this particular table willing to move forward a proposed resolution? Councilor Heen and Councilor Emon? I suppose you're raising your hand to support staff's recommendation. Thank you. Moved by Councilor Heen, seconded by Councilor Emon. Please bear with me, I'm about to repeat what Ms. Lewis just said, moved by Councilor Heen, seconded by Councilor Emon. That is recommended in the Report DSC 2001. Date of January 10th, 2020, from the Development Services and Engineering Department, the draft plan of subdivision 4319002, Sophie's Landing Development Corp., 3941 Orchard Point Road, including the proposed conditions of the draft approval for final approval as generally set out in draft form in Schedule C of the report, be presented to council for consideration at its next available meeting, subject to the completion of the city's peer review of the traffic impact study, and that the draft plan of common elements condominium, or CEC 43CD 19002, Sophie's Landing Development Corp., 3941 Orchard Point Road, including the proposed conditions of the draft approval for final approval as generally set out in draft form as Schedule D of the report, be presented to council for consideration at its next available meeting, subject to the completion, once again, of the city's peer review of the traffic impact study. And finally, that the application for zoning bylaw amendment D14A86, Sophie's Landing Development Corp. 3941 Orchard Point Road, as set out in Schedule E of the report, be presented to council for consideration at its next available meeting, subject again to the completion of the city's peer review of the traffic impact study. Is there any discussion from around the table? I'll now call the question all in favor. That is carried. I'd like to go back to Mr. Sugden as our Development, Director of Development Services and Engineering, to explain the subsequent process in the planning process, steps in the planning process. Thank you, Mr. Sugden.
Formal consideration of these draft plan of subdivision, draft plan of common elements condominium, and zoning bylaw amendment applications will not occur until the city's peer review of the applicant's traffic impact study has been completed to the city's satisfaction. Once this is being completed at a future council meeting, council will be presented with a supplementary memo that includes a recommendation about the proposed development. Anyone who wishes to be directly notified of council's decision respecting the proposed development must leave a written request with the clerk using the form which is provided for this purpose in the agenda holder at the back of the council chamber.
Indeed. Thank you, Mr. Sugden. With that being said, I will now entertain a motion to adjourn this planning meeting. Moved by Councilor Heen, seconded by Councilor Spola. All in favor? Thank you. I want to thank the Orchard, anybody who showed up for the Orchard Point file, for their patience in getting through that meeting, and also for those who are here for an exciting announcement in the next few minutes. Thank you for your patience, and to those at home. And apparently, that audience is vast at home. But the, my question for council is, I'm going to suggest we're going to need a recess to get through the following meeting, based on how long we took at that meeting. We can do a five-minute recess now. I'm seeing a few nods of the head. I need a motion to approve that, or to move that forward. Moved by Councilor Fallas, seconded by Councilor Heen. All in favor? Okay, we'll recess, sorry, we won't recess, we'll reconvene at 6:25, so you have a five minutes to do what you need to do. And thank you again for your patience the next five minutes.
Okay, if members of council want to work their way back towards their designated spots. Maggie, did you get it? So tiny, but it's, it hits the spot. Do you want this sucker leave? He's happy if you're happy? Isn't it supposed to be? Okay, well, I will call the meeting, this meeting to order, and staff would queue us up to, for, for Oh Canada.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land, true patron love. In all of us command, with glowing hearts we see thee rise. The true north, strong and free. From our empire, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
If you would remain standing, we'll just take a moment of slight contemplation. Thank you. Thank you very much. Would somebody be so kind to make a motion to approve the agenda before us? Thank you, Councilor Ainsworth, seconded by Councilor Campbell. If there isn't any discussion, I will call the question on favor. Carried. Thank you. Any disclosures of interest? Counselor Campbell?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. Yes, on consent agenda item number two with the Ariria Square Mall. I am an employee of the township of Severn where the mall is located and therefore will not be speaking on that one.
Thank you very much. We will separate that out for consideration. Counselor Lauer?
Thank you, Mayor Clark. I will not be participating in agenda, agenda item, report one clause one or bylaw 2020 dash six. As I have a business interest in the area, they both relate to the same matter.
Thank you. Sorry, what was the first one, Counselor? Report number?
Sorry, report one clause one.
Thank you. And Counselor Hain, my goodness.
It's a report one clause number two, that's 136 West Street North. I live almost directly across the street from the proposed property.
Thank you. And continuing the record-setting night, I have a couple as well. With, with respect to delegated authority, report one clause five. As I have a relationship with the city in an annual seasonal basis for patio license. And also with respect to the grants committee, I participate, have a business that participates in a couple of those community festivals. Those being the Stormy Night, Starry Night, hopefully not Stormy Night Studio, that was this past weekend. Studio Gallery Tour and Roots North Music Festival. You did such a nice job. Okay. Let's have some fun. I know that not all of you are here for the exciting agenda items on the rest of the agenda. You're probably here for. And actually, I actually find those quite exciting, just so you know. Didn't think I would earlier in life. But anyway, so we will move on with the, what I think is a quite exciting time of the year. That's the Citizen of the Year presentation. And just to be a little bit of context, the really a pack at times are. One of our beloved papers, of course, closed the doors a few years ago, and they were wonderful in starting and keeping the Citizen of the Year Award alive on an annual basis. Of course, when that ceased to be the case, a couple of us got together and. Counselor Sepola and I recruited some, some poor souls in the, in the community, some former winners and kept the process going. So that's essentially what tonight is about. And if I could, just before we do get going. I regret to announce that we had the passing of a former Citizen of the Year in Colin Whackett. I'm sure most of you around the room know Colin. He was absolutely tireless in his support of events and causes at the Legion. And, and one of those by extension was the Ride for Dad, which was an annual fundraiser, very significant fundraiser where people came from all parts of the province to participate and raise money for prostate cancer research. So, and their arrangements are, are this, this week. And, and I know Ruth is here tonight, but we also have the recent passing of Alice Stamper, who, who also may not have been the Citizen of the Year. I don't really recall at the moment, but certainly did many, many wonderful things in our, in our surrounding communities in Ariria. Anyway, if I could, I'm going to just call out the selection panel. I know a couple of members could not be here. But if they could join me up front, that would be, that would be terrific. Anderson Charters, who's with me right here, and a former Citizen of the Year, myself. Although I was a non-voting member, just helped to facilitate the meeting. Michael Gordon, very recent Citizen of the Year. Ginny Stringer, I see Ginny up there. Bruce Waite was unable to make it, as well as Ariria Matters editor and reporter Dave Dawson. And Ariria Today reporter Frank Mattis. Wendy Timpano, general manager of the Community Development Corporation, the CDC is unable to join us tonight. But again, thank you very much for, for donating your time over the last couple of months to, to ensure that we're able to move this forward. We had some great discussions and some very worthy recipients, potential recipients. Also, I'd like to say that the beautiful award that the, that the Citizen of the Year is going to receive tonight was, was made and donated by Joe Watt, Joe Watt Trophies. And he's, he's committed to donating that going forward on an annual basis. And I'm not surprised. So I'm just going to give a brief list of all the nominees that, that were, of course, were put forth. And then we've nailed it down to five, five finalists, or sorry, the voting members did. The nominees for 2019 Citizen of the Year include Dean Beers, if you don't know, Dean was the, he's the outgoing president of the Chamber of Commerce. Amanda Bowes, Bob Bowles, Judy Catania, Bruce Duncan, Ruth Fountain, Rose Ganton Thatcher, Carolyn Marie Goodwin, Nancy Hanna, sorry, here somewhere. Stan Matheson, Brent Maudsley, Dr. Kim McIntosh, and Steve Orr. And honorable mentions to Lucy Goodman and Zach Waite, a couple of youth that were nominated and, and which I think is a wonderful idea. So did the members of the, of the committee. So we're going to get to back, after this process is over and we do our debrief, we're going to contemplate what we can do to encourage that kind of nomination going forward. So what I'd like to do is introduce the finalists. And if I would have, maybe I'll have Mike as our most recent winner and maybe, or just as we call these people forward. We'll, we'll have you come forward for a quick picture and then we'll sit everybody, you can just sit down and then we will, then we'll announce the winner. So in alphabetical order, making a grand entry tonight. If you weren't here, Ruth came in and got all of our attention. Ruth has served our community and surrounding communities tirelessly in numerous volunteer capacities. Ruth volunteers at Ariria Soldiers Memorial Hospital, Foodland Ariria, preparing grocery orders for shut-ins, the Ariria Fall Fair, Ariria Public Library, and the Salvation Army, just to name a few. Ruth continuously attends workshops, encourages others to learn about our environment, heritage, health, and food. I'm on for her, Ruth. Nancy Hanna does a lot of work in, in the neighborhood in which I live. Nancy actively serves the community in numerous volunteer capacities, including St. David's Church Children's Club, Regent Park Public School Parent Council, The Sharing Place, and Scouts Canada. Nancy continuously demonstrates that she is committed to enriching lives of others. I have personally witnessed that at St. David's. Dr. Kim McIntosh. Dr. McIntosh goes above and beyond in her role as local physician. And that was unanimous consent of the consensus of the group, whether in her role as program medical director at Soldiers Memorial Hospital for Integrated Care Medicine and Patient Flow, or as a member of the board at the Koochichink Family Health Team. She effectively, effectively inspires colleagues to mobilize, work collaboratively, and is always leading by example. She has also played a vital role in the regional planning table and in moving our local Ontario Health Team initiative forward. She has been an active member of the Ariria Arts Community, seen on stage in two Mariposa Arts Community Theatre productions and courtside coaching basketball. Dr. Kim McIntosh exemplifies what it means to be passionate about the community. I witnessed that at the Ontario Health Team. If you don't know what the initiative, you'll be hearing about it soon. At a conference, Kim has been involved in the health industry for quite a number of years. You'd swear it was her first year with the enthusiasm she brought to the, the table that day. Dr. McIntosh. Stan Matheson. Stan has a passion for this planet. And in the fall of 2018, he initiated Sustainable Ariria with the goal of encouraging the community to take action and build healthy lives for the people of Ariria, our children and our grandchildren. Stan has been instrumental in ensuring the seriousness of climate change is understood and that the individuals understand how their actions can make a difference. And I know I've spent some time with Stan in the last year. Come on down, Stan. And last and certainly not least of our finalists, though I believe he's actually out of the country, if I'm not mistaken. Steve Orr, although Kevin Gangloff is here tonight, is a very worthy stand-in, I will say, Kevin. Steve is a longstanding business owner, supporter and sponsor of local events, local artisans, and a champion for youth-serving groups, hence Kevin's appearance tonight. From sponsoring and supporting the Ariria Youth Center, Ariria Concert Band, Roots North Music Festival, Ariria Opera House Summer Theater, Ariria SPCA, Romero Chamber of Commerce, Vala Sound Studio Project, to the Camp Koochichink Community Initiative, just to name a few. Steve has supported numerous community endeavors, as you can see. And I believe he was also nominated last year. Now Kevin, if you would come and accept that for Steve. Listen, I know that there is, is only one Citizen of the Year, but quite frankly, there's quite a number of winners, certainly the finalists that are here tonight. And, and I'm familiar with all the folks that were nominated and, and the value that you bring to our community. So thank you very much. You do much for many others to aspire to and, as I say, do indeed rich, enrich our community. So without any further ado, well, maybe 20 seconds of ado. Okay, we had to cancel our Citizen of the Year award. So our 2019 Citizen of the Year, Stan Matheson. Stan would mean, just saying a word or two?
Well, I, I'm, I'm really surprised at the nomination and in fact being the, the winner, being a finalist and the winner. You know, sustainable Ariria is, I think it's important to the community. It's because it is the community. It is the community, I think, expressing itself in a, in a way that will move us all towards a more sustainable future. It is indeed a team effort. And I'm honored that as, as the, as the chair, I've been selected as Citizen of the Year. But I really, it's so important that I, that everyone understands that I share this with all of the people on Sustainable, both the board, the sector chairs, and all of the people who work on the committees to bring forward opportunities to, for us to better understand what it means to be a more sustainable community. To, to work hard to bring speakers into the community, to work hard to put actions on the ground. And so to all of my colleagues in Sustainable Ariria, I would like to thank them for that. I would like to thank the committee for the nomination and for the selection and for the city who continues to support the Citizen of the Year. and for the city who continues to support the Citizen of the Year Award Program. I think it's very important because this is a great small city we live in. Someone's in. Yes, you can.
So Stan, yes, we did, the city did make the Citizen of the Year Award sustainable by hosting it, you're right. I will say when I opened up the award, the inner award was actually in a plastic bag. So I'm going to take that home and use it for my dogs before we do a single-use plastic span. Yes, for all the nominees, if Ruth and Nancy and Dr. Kim and Stan and Kevin would just join JR at the back of the room, we'd like to get a group photo, please. Yes, absolutely. Stan, you want to take? Just this thing and one for the picture, maybe? Thanks, man. Yeah, you too, man. Been under a lamp? Got high blood pressure?
No, but I spent five hours with a merger Friday night because I was sat in 81. My asthma acted up or something.
Your O2 is 81?
Yeah.
Ginny, thank you and thanks for the phone call today. It was a very good suggestion. Benui. All right, meeting. Okay, no deputation tonight after our exciting presentation. With respect to the minutes of December 9th, 2019, regarding our special council 2020 budget ratification, December 10th, 2019, special council municipal organization review and pay equity compensation review, December 12th, 2019, public meeting, re-planning matter, December 12th, 2019, regular council meeting. Would somebody be so kind, make a motion to approve those minutes? Thank you, Councillor Campbell. Thank you, Councillor Heen as a seconder. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Sharon Anderson. Nothing under correspondence, though we had a number of it related to our planning matter earlier, reports. And we have a motion, I presume, with a couple of exclusions, at least for articulated conflicts. Is there a mover and a seconder to put this on the floor? Councillor Heen, mover? Councillor Sapola, seconder. That the report number 2020-1 of council committee now before council be adopted, with the exception of clauses 1, 2, and 5, which shall be introduced separately. Thank you, Dr. Kim. Seriously, the passion that she has for healthcare in this community is absolutely, absolutely. Okay, any discussion with respect to the remaining items on the report agenda? Just a reminder for those watching at home that we have a couple of parts of the agenda, one under reports, one under consent. On the reports, these are items that were all discussed and moved forward for ratification this week at council committee last week. And so we capture them all under one motion, and thus we have to move some out for change of direction or for conflicts. And we are doing that right now. But the rest of them, and if you want to know what they are each specifically, they're certainly on the website and there's paper copies available at City Hall. Don't hesitate to find out what they are. Any further discussion? I'll call the question. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Apparently that's what they used to do when they wanted to talk at the council table. Even in your day, wasn't it, Ron? Was it before your day? I'm not kidding. At least I didn't think I was. Maybe I'm kidding. Now, this is report 1-1, without Councillor Lauer. Is there a mover and a seconder? Moved by a councillor, seconded by councillor Clustra. That clause 1 of report number 2020-1 of council committee now before council be, this is with respect to land acquisition, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Come on back into the fold, Councillor Lauer. Report, item number 1-2, with respect to basically a non-designation by the Municipal Heritage Committee with respect to 136 West Street North. Councillor Heen has taken a leave on this one. The motion is before you, a mover and a seconder. Councillor Ainsworth, thank you. Councillor Emon. That clause 2 of report number 2021 of council committee now before council be adopted. Further discussion? I will now call the question. All in favor? Kerry, thank you.
I'll start over. That clause 5 of report number 2020-1 of council committee now before council be adopted. Councillor Campbell. I'm sorry? Oh, moved by Councillor Campbell and seconded by Councillor Ainsworth. All those in favor? It is carried.
Sorry, that cleans up all the clauses of report, item number 1. With respect to report number 2, Councillor Heen, would you mind? Oh, we're going to do the other ones first? Okay. With respect to Grants Committee, the Aralia Perch Festival, the Aralia Scottish Festival, and the studio, no, that's it, I guess. Right there, a mover and a seconder, please. Moved by Councillor Emon, seconded by Councillor Sapola. That is recommended in the Grants Committee Report 2020-01, dated January 14th, 2020. The following 2020 partnership program for cultural events and events grants be approved. Thank you, Madam Deputy Clerk. Aralia Perch Festival, $2,500, and Aralia Scottish Festival, $2,500. And the 29 partnership program, cultural events and events, cultural festivals and events grant application from the Aralia Kennedy Committee be approved for $2,500. Any further discussion? I will now call the question. All in favor? Kerry, thank you.
Left it on. Okay, so that is recommended in Grants Committee Report 2020-01, dated January 14th, 2020. The following 2020 partnership program for cultural festivals and events grants be approved. The Roots North Music Festival for $2,500 and the Starry Night Studio and Gallery Tour for $1,500. Do I have a mover and a seconder? By Councillor Ainsworth, seconded by Councillor Sapola. All those in favor? It is carried.
Okay, we now have motions. And this one was with respect to 70 Mississauga Street, Nodawasaga Street, sorry. And I will wait for the motion to appear on the screen. There it is, a draft zoning bylaw amendment. Is somebody willing to put that on the floor? Councillor Emon and Councillor Ainsworth, thank you. That further to the public meeting of council held on December 12th, 2019, council approved zoning bylaw amendment application number D14885, Bridgette and Kerry Taylor, 70 Nodawasaga Street, thank you, in accordance with the draft zoning bylaw amendment set out in the supplementary memo dated January 10th, 2020 from the Development Services and Engineering Department. Discussion. I will now call the question. All in favor? Kerry, thank you. Well, I don't want to know if I want to do that to the folks at home, but I do need to run upstairs. Councillor Heen, would you be so kind as to take the chair for about four and a half to five minutes? Thank you.
So we're at the consent agenda. Has anything been pulled from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, at this time, I'm aware of item 2 being pulled with respect to the transit service to the mall. Councillor Campbell has declared a conflict on that item. And Councillor Clustra is wishing to speak to item number 7, which is vehicle for hire licensing.
So it's item 2 and 7. So we have a motion for the other, either just to speak to or a change of direction?
Madam Chair, if we have a mover and a seconder to get this motion on the floor, that will separate item 2 to be dealt with with a separate motion. And after this motion is read, Councillor Clustra can speak to his item.
Okay, that's fine. So do I have a move by Councillor Emon and seconded by Councillor Ainsworth? That council adopt the recommendations set out of the consent agenda for the regular meeting of council held on January 20th, 2020, with the exception of the recommendations with respect to the correspondence, item 2, which shall be introduced separately. Comments? So, Councillor Clustra, you wish to?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just in regards to consent, item number 7, with regarding to the extra transportation services that are not offered in the city of Aralia. This is the second time I've read this type of letter from Mr. Wintercott. We do have a letter on the tomorrow night's DOMB agenda as well. And it's very concerning to the point that I have been in his shoes, where you have been downtown in certain times of the evening when you've been out and there is no way to get home. You can certainly call a taxi cab. And there's not enough taxi cabs in the city of Aralia when there's a night, there's an event at the casino. And I think this is a problem where this council should try and address to have a little more options for citizens if we're going to be making these restaurants and areas successful. And I think we need to look at other services like Uber and Lyft to certainly come back to this council to give a little more choice for residents who want to get home safely. Thank you.
I think, I'm sorry, I think we're going to introduce that item separately. Is that correct? Okay.
Through you, Madam Chair. I believe the councillor just wished to speak to the matter so it wasn't actually being pulled.
Okay, okay. Councillor Sapola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. From my understanding, maybe through you to our CAO, there's a report coming next week on this actual item on our agenda, if I'm not mistaken.
Through you, Madam Chair. Councillor Sapola is correct, with the exception, it'll be February 3rd. So your next council committee meeting, Mr. Crawford, will be before you with a report on this issue.
Thank you. Any further comments? All the, can I call the question? All those in favor? It is carried. Speak up, okay. So the item number 2, which should be introduced separately? So do I have a mover? Moved by Councillor Ainsworth, seconded by Councillor Emon? That the recommendation with respect to correspondence, item number 2, on the consent agenda for the regular meeting of council held on January 20th, 2020, be adopted? So any discussion? Councillor Sapola?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think where to thank should go out to the Severn Town Council, the Severn Township Council for their support in this because without their support, I don't think we would have had a bus going up to the mall. So I think a thank you should go out to them as well.
Been noted by our staff, a letter of thank you? Any further comments? Can I call the question? All those in favor? It is carried. Okay. If I could just get back to the agenda. Can you hand me my? I can't get back to these. I can't get back to the agenda. Thank you. Sorry about that. Okay, so the next item. Hold on a second, just let me sound this one. I didn't know your code.
A bylaw to approve, is there somebody, a mover and a seconder, put this on the floor? Moved by Counselor Ainsworth, seconded by Counselor Clustra, thank you. A bylaw to approve an agreement of purchase and sale with Aiden Mesh for property at 385 Homewood Avenue, Aurelia. This bylaw approves an agreement of purchase and sale, thank you, with Aiden Mesh for the property at 385 Homewood Avenue, Aurelia, as recommended by council committee. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Okay, and lastly, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings tonight, a mover and a seconder. Thank you, Counselor Campbell, thank you, Counselor Lauer. That bylaw number 2027, that is, a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council, its meetings held on January 20th, 2020, be enacted. Thank you. As I said, moved by Counselor Campbell, seconded by Counselor Lauer. Any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. I'll entertain announcements. Counselor Ainsworth?
Yes, through you, Mayor Clark. Just wanted to encourage members here as well as folks who are listening at home. This weekend is the amazing Winter Fest out in Severn Township, out at Otis Park. I know I attended last year, and it was pretty phenomenal to see what they're up to. This year, they're going even bigger and better with some of the stuff, so definitely check it out. I know it's a lot of Aurelia folks who do go there as well, and people in the surrounding communities, and it's a nice, big community event, so definitely check it out.
Thank you, Counselor Ainsworth. Any further announcements? We now have open public forum. Not always easily orchestrated without a public. We have our wonderful members of media, but no members of public. In that case, I will entertain a motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Ainsworth. Not the first meeting you've moved to adjourn. Seconded by Counselor Follus. All in favor? That is carried. Safe home. Thank you. Stay warm.